Welcome to our board meeting. Tonight, the pledge will be led by Mr. Donald Turner.
Pledge and will.
To comply of the United States of America, and to a republic which expands on nations, on the ground, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Just to let the visitors know, we had a work session last night at which we discussed a lot of this stuff. So it seems like we're moving rapidly. Ms. Michaels is, I don't see any visitor forms.
I don't have any.
Okay. Okay. We did the TSBA legislative update last night, so I think we're ready for number eight.
Okay. Let's just go back. Spotlight on education. Tennessee Value Added Assessment System has produced a new comparative scatter plot report. And Mr. Odom will focus on review of Rutherford County Schools' comparative value-added statewide performance. Mr. Odom?
One of the things that kind of makes me nervous when you do a live performance, you know, you don't know how that works. Usually it's PowerPoint. This is live tonight, so you can get the full effect of it, I think, and see it. This is a public site. You do not have to be signed on as a school system employee. You can sign on the T-VOX public site and see this. But about two weeks ago, the Tennessee Value Added System or the T-VOX came out with a report. It's under reports, and this mechanism is called new scatter plot. That's it right there. So I have that up. So one of the interesting things that you can do to look at some comparative reports, we can go down now and choose Rutherford County. And it'll plot us on a graph. And I just, a little something to show you about the graph as we do that. That we're the star. Now, when you look at the graph, the vertical axis, the y-axis, I was speaking with a group of math teachers today, and I had to make sure I used the correct terminology. The vertical axis is the entering achievement level of the students taking the test. The horizontal axis, the x-axis, in this case, is positive and negative zero is a year's gain for a year in school. So that earns you zero. That's the expected growth of a student. So what you're, when you look at this, you begin to look and see, well, what kind of growth do we have? So you see, in TCAP math composite across our grades, which would be gains fourth through eighth grade, you can see where Rutherford County is about forty percent. In fact, you place it over it, you'll see it's forty point eleven is the gain when you place your cursor over it. And the beginning level of our student was fifty-eight point forty-seven. To really begin to see this and understand it, what you have to do then is go back over here and select all other districts in the state of Tennessee. And we'll get a little bit different graph that'll let you see how we rank in math for three through eight. And you can begin to get a little bit of a picture of that. It went faster than that this morning, didn't it, Mr. Gill?
Sure did.
Don, you said the growth index is percentile or percentage?
It's really a change in your normal curve equivalent scores. So that should be with us included, was it one hundred and thirty-four districts in Tennessee? That should be everybody else. Now, I can move over any line here, and you'll see two or three things that's interesting here. This one right up here happens to be Williamson County, which has gains like hours in math, but they start out at the sixty-fifth percentile. In other words, that's where the kids started at. When you come down and look at some of these lower dots, remember your entering achievement is here. You look here, you see Memphis, which gets lots of criticism, but they're starting at less than the forty-fifth percentile, but they have very good gains also. So but just watch our arrow. Now, I'm going to, what I'm looking for when I run the report like this, I'm looking for our consistency across subjects, our relative ranking across subjects, to see how well we're doing in performance. So all I have to do to begin to look at this is go now and just simply change my subject to language arts, and I'll get a new graph. And that new graph will compare us on language arts, again, with every other district in the state. Typically, this is done, and probably if you did it at home or something, might be do this in two to three seconds. It usually does not take this long at all, whether it's heavy usage time or not. Uh-oh, let's see there, that's what I'm talking about. Try, that may still be, let me try one more time, see if it changes anything. That's reading language, that's probably correct. Let me go down now and see if it'll give me my, the science. That's what I kind of want. You see how the dots move around? Look at where our arrow stays. It looks like we're about second in the state in science. And you come down, you take a look at social studies. There's social studies. I'll go back and choose reading again, just to make sure it picked that up since we got the arrow message. It's still in that area. So one of the things that, if you'll look at Rutherford County, is lots of consistency in the scores regardless of the subject. Now, you saw some other dots that moved all over the place up here. When you get on this side and you look at districts, you'll see negative. As Cleveland, Tennessee, sees negative scores. But you, if you remember, these little dots really went everywhere. It becomes more interesting then when you take a look at it in terms of, how do we do? You ask some other questions. I have the ability to restrict demographics. How do we do in Rutherford County with our gifted students, some of our best and brightest? Can we still maintain gains? And do we have consistency with the brighter students that come to us in Rutherford County? And this should give us a picture of that information. And again, I'm in the elementary, is what we're looking at now. This is going probably a fraction of the speed this morning it went. It went really, really quickly. What you're going to see in this is, as we, if it comes up where we can take a look at it, you're going to see that the gain level is very consistently high compared to the state of Tennessee for the subjects regardless of the subject with our gifted student. And this is a very good tool for us in instruction to look at, to see if we're missing a subgroup or something in this particular order.
So, Don, in reading and math, most of the dots are on the positive side of zero, right?
Which means that most districts are having more than a year's growth for a year's gain.
Does that mean we need to adjust what a year's growth is?
That was actually probably adjusted, this is the 2011 data. We can go back and look at three years' data also. But the tests changed. There's a huge growth this year in terms of teachers. I've always said teachers, well, if you tell them what they need to teach, they will teach it. So we saw a really big increase this year in the scores from the year before. In fact, the figure that we have, we did receive a summary. And I'll just go ahead and give you that summary while it's cranking out, whatever it's doing. When I looked at our elementary teachers in four through eight, and we got the teacher effect last week, Rutherford County had for the composite, which included all four subjects, forty-nine point nine percent of our teachers scored a four or a five. Now, if you remember, early on, they were saying that three is where most people are going to be. When they actually predicted, they said that there would be five to ten percent would be a level five, and you might have up to twenty percent or so, ten to twenty-five percent, maybe in a level four. But we had, where the statewide average, that tells you more. On the statewide average was thirty-seven point eight. Rutherford County was forty-nine point nine percent of our teachers were either four or five. And in high school, some of the same thing. Forty-four point one percent of our teachers were four or five. And in statewide, it's thirty-five point two. So that's a compliment to our principals who are employing teachers. And all, Mr. Gill, we're gonna have, we got a problem.
That's shocking.
And that's, I mean, went through the whole thing this morning, but that's so.
Can you, yeah, I was gonna say.
So typically, when you do live things, like I say, if it can happen, it will typically. Let me try, once again, let me try another study. And you can see I'm doing gifted. Let me pop up now to say science for our gifted, see if it does it quickly or not. We're gonna run into all sorts of problems, looks like. But what really happened, but you can do this yourself. Like I say, it's a public site at home. You can look at it, you can see it. But what you'll find as you look at Rutherford County is the consistency, again, of high value-added gains regardless of the subject when that changes. So that's the thing that looks so, and why I really wanted to do this live, because I wanted you to be able to see, I wanted you to be able to see how the dots move, how you see that, and you can see in what relative area of Rutherford County. Try it again, you can log in, you think? Let's try, you shouldn't take long to do that unless there's a problem with the. It works a little bit better in Mozilla than it does Internet Explorer when you look at that. So that's why we're, I'm using that.
Mr. Gill, are, is this, are these comparative with the change in standards that we just had this past year?
Does it factor that in?
Well, I mean, in comparison, I mean, these scores are so much better, and the rigor is so much more difficult.
And they are actually statewide, they're much better. You'll see, I think he intends to show we had all, we had all gains value-added, all subject areas, three through eight.
And that's impressive to me with the change in the difficulty level of the curriculum.
Hopefully, this is it, Ms. Blam, when we sign back in. It looks like it's still slow. That's another, it's some other issue associated with it. But anyway, if you want to look at it yourself, you can go to the, you can Google it, or you can go to the State Department of Education website. I usually go there and simply ask for T-VOX public. If you ask for T-VOX public, you can go in and take a look at that and see how it might be. But again, it is easy. Let me try one more time here while we're there. It didn't plot us up then, so something's not.
Don, I'm on the site, and it's not working for me either.
Okay, there's an issue associated with it then. But anyway, you have the ability, I really wanted to show you that and show you. You can go and choose individual schools. It'll let you look at schools and how they rank across the state. Of course, that really fills the page up with dots because you got every school. I was going to click, some interesting thing for you, Rutherford County, and click some surrounding counties and things around us, and then toggle through that. And you can see immediately how we compare with those around us in terms of value added. And you have any of a number of things that you would, that you can look at in subjects up here. It may let me let you see that. But you have all of those subjects. You can go over here and change your test. You can change to high school or the other. That explorer, see, is your middle school test, ACT, that sort of thing is available also. So very good report. Our principals are beginning to use it in comparison. I'm sorry, you know.
Well, I think one of the things pointed out this morning, all those, the various subgroups, almost every case, they were the top four, five, six systems in the entire state. We were first in a couple. Smyrna High was first in the entire state, three-year average in American History intercourse. It's across the board. It's just amazing how well our teachers and principals are performing.
How do we compare with the other systems that did well? You know, we have, we're right at fifty percent free and reduced, system-wide, is that correct?
Something forty-two, four?
And, and of course, we have a high ESL population too, and that continues to grow. And our scores are still the best in the state. And some of the counties like Williamson, you know, their demographics would not be on par. They wouldn't have the same demographics.
Actually, I think we have twenty-one hundred ESL students. We're about forty-four percent free and reduced. Our people do a good job. The data bears that out. I think they're doing better than a good job. It's amazing.
Maybe come back next time with a hard copy of some of those.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say we do that. Let's, I mean, it's worth showing.
I want you to see the dots move.
Yeah, right.
Because of the thing, that's why I was trying to do it live, is because you can see the consistency we have. When you look at other systems, this subject may be even better than us though, but it may move all the way over to the negative side for a different area or something. So you see those great variations in it. So that's a compliment to our people. And I think it's our professional learning communities, the PLC is one thing, but the teachers collaborating together, you can maintain that level at a higher level across the subjects and across the grades when you look at it.
Consistent high growth in all areas, that's excellent, so.
Good stuff.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments at that?
Just congratulations, Mr. Gill, to you and all of your staff. That's pretty incredible numbers.
Thank you.
Number nine.
Just, we discussed this last night. Actually, we discussed it a few times over the years. Old business McFadden School of Excellence admission requirements. The county city designation on the McFadden School of Excellence application will be removed. All students will be admitted and/or placed on a waiting list pursuant to the same admission requirements. And as I said last night, siblings, the sibling rule will remain in place, which means that it suggests.
Okay, we've had plenty of discussion of this topic over the years.
Any final words?
I think Mr. Hodge probably had something to say to you.
He's kind of the inspiration behind this.
Kind of a told you so?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a few of us have been talking about this. We've all been talking about it for a long time.
Yeah, it's good.
Appreciate the chance.
Number ten.
Ten, approval of 2011, 2012 textbook adoption committee participants. Each year, the state requires the local Board of Education to approve textbooks, selecting committees on state Form ED 2150. Textbook adoption subjects for this year are art and business technology, trade and industrial, construction and transportation, computer science, driver ed, English, health sciences education, trade and industrial, human services and law, marketing education, vocal general music, music, spelling, theater, trade and industrial, graphic communication, media, information technology, web, and visual arts. And we adopt books every six years, and they're different books, obviously, on the cycle. And recommend that you approve the 2011, 2012 textbook adoption committees as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
How much money is this? How much are we spending on this particular category?
Yeah, I don't know, Mr. Jerry. You know, Mr. Sam, do you?
I would have to go back and look. That is one of our, it is one of our highest, the reading adoption attempt. It's gonna be our largest. It's kind of hard to separate from the critical textbooks for a particular year. Is there a?
Well, I noticed a lot of these are CT-type career. And just wondered.
Other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Don, go ahead.
Sorry. Additional state funds for that particular category? There's not?
It's a stable amount each year in the ECA.
Okay. So they don't write it out?
We, a lot of these are kind of specialty courses, and there's not as many texts that are used, but. I was gonna say, we have sets in the classroom, yeah.
That's, that's what I noticed about that group.
But Jeff and I were talking here a week or two ago. We saved a substantial amount of money by either selling textbooks or purchasing, oh, which was it, Jeff?
Later in the adoption.
Yeah.
We say, the people we bought from the father estimated, we say it was in a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for about two years.
Yeah.
By purchasing used textbooks. We purchased new books the first year of adoption. Remember, it's a set, so if you're in your fourth year of adoption or something, it doesn't make a lot of sense to go out and buy a new book. So we searched for used textbooks. And I estimate we saved a hundred and ninety-eight thousand in two years. I mean, used textbooks and still.
They're not remanufactured, are they?
Well, actually, they're single-streamed textbooks. We got them right off the loading docks at the schools out there. Mike, don't want to be glad to know that.
Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion's adopted. Number eleven, we had the update last night. And the committee, the, what do we call it, special question committee, which was composed of myself, Mr. Hodge, Mr. Blair, and three teachers. One from REA, one from Pet or Perk, and one unaffiliated. We had our meeting just prior to this meeting. Everything went very well. We've got the rules now in place for this election, which will take place on November sixteenth and will make up day on November seventeenth. So, and the committee will meet again just prior to our board meeting on that day to validate the results. And at that time, well, at that time, we'll know whether or not we're going forward with a collaborative conferencing or not. If the motion passes, then I guess as soon as the training is done, I'm a little vague on when that training takes place, first of the year, sometime next spring or summer, the actual conferencing will start. But if it's not approved by a majority of the teachers, then nothing happens until next October when they have an opportunity to request again. Did I get that more or less right? Okay. Thanks to Ms. Barnes and Ms. McLeod, who really did a lot of legwork to make that meeting go smoothly. So I thought it went quite well. Any questions on that or comments? So that election will be taking place next month. School vouchers, I believe we agreed to put on the next agenda, whether or not we want to pass a resolution on that.
Definitely.
TSBA Board of Distinction, we handled last night. Brings us to general discussion.
On Board of Distinction, we weren't able to take a vote. Do we need a rec, record?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, fine, good.
We will, it is time for us, though, to start talking about the evaluation of the director again. And Aaron, I know that's a topic on which you have some thoughts. I think we need to probably discuss that sooner rather than later. Now, last year was a little bit of an exception, but typically, we try to get it done before Christmas. That was our pattern before last year. Last year, I think it took place in, what, February or something like that. So we'll need to start the process of discussing whether we want to do that evaluation. Do we do that now, we can do it later? We can do it now and later. What's your pleasure? I sort of sprang this on you, but, and that, this is the, is part of that Board of Distinction process, and something we need to do anyway, and we have done.
TSBA has a template for the evaluation of the director of schools. It's something that we've used in the past, and it's something that we went away from last year to a different model. I have a personal preference towards something that is more like what TSBA suggests. It certainly allows us to have editorial comments and such, but it also gives kind of a, that same kind of rubric scale that says there's a numeric evaluation that comes out of it.
You know, what that, as I recall, though, what it doesn't do is what you've also talked about, is this idea of tying the evaluation to the specific goals that we give the director. As I recall, the TSBA document doesn't do that either. It's strictly based on, am I correct? I haven't looked at that in a year or so, but.
I think you're exactly correct.
So I'm not, I'm not sure I see what the great advantage of the TSBA document is. But maybe we can ask Ms. Michaels to provide us copies of what we did last year and this TSBA template. And that'll help us, you know, sort of remember what the options are.
If we could also add to that the goals that came out of the February planning session, so that it'll remind us of those.
Good idea.
I think that that's been something that has been achieved and could help us to have some empirical evidence.
Ms. Michaels?
Yes.
The one that we used, the evaluation form that we used prior to what we changed to the narrative last year, is that on the same lines as what Mr. Holliday is referring to?
The one we used last year, we've used two years.
Right, not the, not the essay form, the multiple choice form, we used twice. I don't know, I don't recall if that was TSBA or not.
See.
I don't think it was.
It was, it was a numbered system with an opportunity for a small narrative. And of course, what we did last year was a longer version of a narrative, which personally, I still favor, but certainly, the will of the board, I will cooperate with.
I don't recall TSBA's. I'll have to research it.
Well, then, in that case, I guess we need also the one that we used prior to this most recently.
I'll give you all of them.
So that, yeah, give us, that'll be three of them for us to look at then.
A few years ago, TSBA rep came up and talked with us about the tools that we could use for director evaluation. We elected, you know, one then, but we didn't use TSBA.
As I recall, the one we used a couple of times Joyce found from another system.
Correct.
And we adapted it a little bit and used that.
Adapted it, and you all worked it the way you pictured it.
So I guess the best thing to do, give us that, those copies. Our next meeting is when the.
Seventeenth.
Not till the seventeenth of November. Then you probably should mail them to us, and maybe we can, I think we should plan on making a decision by the seventeenth. Because that will give us several weeks to do it, and that way, we'd be wrapped up with them for Christmas. I think that should be, I think that should be our goal. How does that sound?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think we know the arguments. At least, I remember the discussion from last time, and I think two nights will be, should be sufficient for us to make a decision on the format. Does that sound like a plan to everybody?
Good plan.
Okay. Other discussion?
Just quick comment.
Yeah.
I know a lot of you folks here, I think you're here with respect to the supplements, and I think you're associated with either the Oakland or Segal bands and perhaps others. I'll be happy to stay around for a few minutes and talk to you guys and answer some questions, and maybe put your, put your minds at ease in some instances, so.
Yeah, nothing will happen officially on, early as something would happen, and even then, it would only be a recommendation, is November thirtieth. But there's a policy committee meeting set for that date at 5:00 PM in this room. You're certainly more than welcome to attend that. Even if something came out of that policy committee, it would still require two votes and two consecutive meetings of the school board before anything was adopted. So no action is imminent on this, if in fact, any action takes place at all. So just so you know what the process is. But, yeah. Have you said all you want to say on that, Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I got to sit in on the principals' meeting that happened this afternoon. Mr. Gill took care of. It was just outstanding. And right at the end of the meeting, there was some conversation about the teacher evaluation model. Once again, we're privileged, but at the same time, it's an appropriate responsibility. Both Mr. Horn and Mr. Duke, principals from our system, will be up at Capitol Hill on Wednesday of next week, testifying about that. And I think it's a tribute to the quality principals we have in our system that they've been selected to bring some feedback to the legislators.
Thank you for that, Aaron.
And I think Mr. Tackett's suggestion is. And I think Mr. Tackett's suggestion, as far as this board writing a letter to the state, I think a lot of the other systems followed suit and, and got everybody looking at it again and seeing what a burden it is on, on the administrators and the, and the faculty members alike.
I believe. Didn't one of the, Ms. Ball said there's a New York Times reporter interested in doing a story on, on this?
There he is. Wanted to interview, I think, Tim Tack, one of the, actually, you and, and I think said he penned the letter. You referred that to him in the interview, some teachers. And I think it may have been in part because of that letter, and also, you know, there's been pretty vocal about the evaluation system, so see where that goes.
Okay. Other discussion? Not seeing any, we are adjourned.